Call to order, everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where everyone peacefully may stand, but to ask Pastor John Henry, please come give us a prayer.
Let us pray. My Father, we come to you once again in the name of Jesus, giving you thanks for this day that you have made. We thank you, Lord, for this body of council people and all of the leaders of this city. And we ask, Lord, that you will endow them with a necessary wisdom and knowledge necessary to make the proper decisions for the governance of this great city. We ask, Lord, for their protection, for not only them, but their families. We ask, Lord, for the protection of our law enforcement officers as well. We ask, Lord, collectively, for your warring angels to be around every citizen of this city, protecting us from all harm and danger. Be with us, my Father, in this meeting, as the issues of the day are being discussed. We pray, Lord, that you will endow them with the necessary wisdom and knowledge so that everything can be done decently and in order. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Watley. Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Present.
Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
All members are present.
Great. Everyone have a chance to look at the agenda? Any additions? We have to add Carnival closing the road, South River Park Drive to item E. Anything else? G? Got a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda for the council meeting of July 3rd, 2017.
Board, you probably moved supportive, discussion? Yeah, we... Under consent agenda, we are, consent agenda, we're adding the city attorney.
City Attorney's Bill for Services.
Turn B what, H?
It'll be B under consent agreement.
Five B, yeah. Five B.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the agenda for the regular city council meeting of July 3rd, 2017, with the addition of, under consent agreement, item B, City Attorney's Bill for Services.
Abort. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay. Presentation, discussion, introduction of the Inglewood Housing Director. Ms. Smith, could you come introduce the Inglewood Housing Director?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Nolan, Council, our destiny, audience, and our viewing guest. I am Carolyn Smith, the chairperson for the Inglewood Housing Commission. And at this time, I'd like to just brief you a little bit on the young lady that we had the pleasure of hiring for the executive director. In February, we lost our executive director and we put out an ask for a new executive director. It was a very tenacious and rigorous process for all of the commissioners, our vice chair, Father Commissioner Ellis Clifton, Commissioner DeSala, DeSala Scott, and Commissioner Mabel Strohman, and in our absence, Commissioner Williams. So, we were fortunate enough to find someone that we feel is going to be able to help us work through some of the situations that we've been dealing with over in housing, as well as pair that, that, that vision that she has with the vision that the city has. And at this time, I'd like to just bring her up, her name is Ms. Linda Bernard, Ms. Bernard if you would call her. We know that for many, many years, there has always been a perception that housing is a completely different entity than the city of Inglewood, but we want to change that ideology and that perception and let people know that we are a community and that we're here to work together with our public service, with our council, with our city, and all those individuals that want to see our city move forward. And we believe that Ms. Bernard is going to help us with that vision. She has been with us, this is her third week, I want to say, her third week with us. And there has been definitely a lot of changes that have been made in housing. And I'm just very pleased to be able to introduce her to you all. And we look forward to having further communication with the council and any, and anybody that's interested in helping us move our city forward. Ms. Bernard?
Thank you.
Father Clifton, did you have some comments that you want to make? I think Father Clifton has some things he wanted to say. He's always got something to say.
Put him on the time.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Inglewood. Many people have asked many times, why Linda Bernard as our new executive director? And I would like to just tell you why for me. Linda Bernard has a vision. She's able to think outside of the box. She has a vision of a public housing community that is melded in with the city of Inglewood, so that's not us and them, but it's all just us together. She has a love for the people that she's called to serve. Just a little bit about her that many might not know, that she put aside a lot of effort that she could have done in a lucrative law practice to fight for and to stand up for many of the people who are residents of public housing. She knows the rules and the regulations, like she would know the telephone directory or, you know, like you wouldn't know the telephone directory, would you? Like she would know the back of her hand. And with that, that knowledge, she not only successfully, successfully fought for the residents in public housing, but she was an agent of change for those residents. And so, because we say it's a brand-new day and this beautiful woman is going to bring in an era of beauty into public housing and to the city of Inglewood, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of the Inglewood Housing, we present you with these flowers.
Arrived.
First of all, the Honorable Mayor Nolan, honorable members of the Inglewood City Council, certainly my brethren in the profession, David Jones, who is an attorney, and of course, our development and economic development director, Ms. Fields, Chief Riley, and Chief Hubbard. It is, and of course DPS, we couldn't exist without DPS. Thank you very much for, first of all, thank, let me thank the members of my board who were so kind in their introduction. I just want you, ladies and gentlemen, to know that the hardest working body in this community, outside of this body, is the Inglewood Housing Commission Board. Let me offer them. They really care, they are truly committed, and it is an honor and a privilege for me to work with them. The, just very, very briefly, for your information in terms of public housing in Inglewood, we have roughly 1,500 residents. And that includes both the Twin Towers, as well as our developments, housing developments onsite, which would be, I guess that's west of, of Inglewood Road. The, there are about 1,100 females that are in public housing, about 667 males. But I think what would, what means the most to you, and to me as well, is the fact that, what's, and I think what's incredibly important for all of us to understand, is that of those residents, nearly 1,400 are youth under the age of 18. So that's where our primary focus is going to be. It's going to be to try to address the concerns of young families and certainly young people within our community. The, in the last two weeks, we've done a couple of things. Number one, as you know, there was considerable damage to public housing as a result of the windstorm. You've seen those blue tarps. We're currently getting ready to let contracts for those, for those, that roofing contract, that RFP is on my desk to review. I urge you to have minority contractors and female-owned contractors to bid our work. Secondly, we are going to reopen the mini-police station, which used to be open, and it's not anymore. Chief Riley was kind enough to come out and review the facility, go through it. He's already making plans with members of his auxiliary police department to come in. We're going to fix the roof, and I guess the rest of it is, is really on him and, and his team. So I'm really pleased about that, because we're concerned about crime issues within, within public housing. I think the most important thing that people look forward to in terms of housing, of course, is safety. And he has pledged his support. He's been over there numerous times in the last several weeks to try to help us get oriented and try to think about new and different ways to, to do, if you will, community policing, which is what I'm a strong advocate of personally. We want to move the Police Athletic League into the Simmons Center or into one of our, to one of our other facilities so that we can have police directly in touch with the community so that we can build a synergy, if you will. One of the things I, I need your help with, ladies and gentlemen, is that the crime issues are things, are certainly issues that Chief Riley has emphasized to me. Most particularly, he says, with Lemoine Gardens and also Parkside. And what I want to do, rather than, if you will, implement all sort of police action where everyone gets arrested, is I want to, I want to have a gun buyback program. And I haven't even approached my board about it yet. But, but I really think that if we can institute this program, we can get a lot of people, particularly women, for example, who'll just take the gun and bring it for $100, you know, just because, because, because they care about their children and they're involved with youth in the community. And it doesn't make sense for us to have as many guns as, as we probably have now in public housing, per Chief Riley, and I want to get them back. So, as you guys are thinking, think about resources for us that we can utilize to do, no questions asked, no video cameras, we're not fingerprinting anybody, anything like that. Just turn in the gun, we hand you $100. So that maybe this will stimulate the public safety issues that, that Chief Riley is so concerned about. Secondly, we're looking at beautification efforts. We're going to revise our, our landscaping program and our maintenance issues, which I think are severe and significant with respect to housing. I mean, how, public housing is and should be attractive and open to people. It should not be, you know, cluttered with furniture or tall grass or weeds, et cetera. So we're looking to do some significant things with our groundskeeping crew. Finally, I, I'd just simply like to offer you my services in any way that I can be helpful. I'm an attorney, I'm licensed in four states. I've argued and won three cases in the Michigan Supreme Court. And I've had a varied experience, because for 16 years I headed legal services, which only addressed the needs of low-income people. We hired hundreds of people, I've managed millions of dollars, I'm very comfortable with that role. And with, with respect to that, I, we initiated, when I was head of legal services, a variety of youth programs, street law, for example, a no-dope program, peer mediation programs. We initiated a senior program, a seniors' law center. We initiated at the only AIDS law center in the state of Michigan, which addressed the legal needs of people who were HIV positive and their children. Of course, we had a major housing program, I did extensive work with Herman Gardens, which no longer exists, as you know, there's a whole new development there, as, as well as a considerable amount of affordable housing development. So if I can be of, of help or service to you in any way, or use any relationships that I may have, or I don't have any problem with being an advocate knocking on people's doors and, you know, making them or getting them to listen, please feel free to call upon me and, of course, the members of, of our staff at the Housing Commission, as well as the members of the board. Thank you for being so gracious with your attention, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. And I want to tell you how wonderful I think your city council chambers are. They remind me of ours in Detroit. Thank you so much.
We'd just like to say welcome to Inglewood Housing. Can't wait to, wait to work with you, because we have a lot of things to get done over at Housing and in the community. Okay, everybody, if, you probably recognize a new face. We have a new city planner, name's Adriana Jordan, wave your hand. That's who you'll be seeing now, if you have any planning issues, residential, commercial, you'll be meeting with Ms. Jordan and she'll be taking care of it. Okay, we're going to move forward now to a public hearing.
Public hearing to amend the existing ordinance to adopt by reference the water supply cross-connection rules of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, being R. 325.11401 to R. 325.11407 of the Michigan Administrative Code. The proposed amended ordinance will add provisions to require the installation and testing of backflow assemblies and to establish penalties for violations of the ordinance.
Chair McMoos, to open the public meeting?
Abort. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Mr. Bivens?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mayor, council, to my department here, to the viewing audience, to the audience here. Me now, all right. This evening, I'm in charge of holding a public hearing for the purpose of changing our cross-connection ordinance, which involves commercial businesses that are in the area of the city of Inglewood. My company goes out and does an inspection to make sure that their water that they are supplying to the public is not tampered with or has infiltration or any kind of, that would cause harm to you guys. So, I have been requested by them to update our ordinance to be in line with the EPA in the state of Michigan, as they have changed their ordinance, and to add me to our ordinance where if people are in violation, now the city can find them or assess them with a penalty. So I'll open the floor now for any question. That's what I'm, that's what I'm striving to do.
Who's the question?
Oh, she said they just want to be healthy.
So this is a public hearing, so anybody can come up, make comment, ask a question, sing a song, whatever you want to do. This is your chance. Okay, you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I just want to ask him, because he mentioned earlier about, not yet, when he talked about residential.
What are we looking at there?
I've been in Washington, they are trying to pass something that will force cities like us and other municipalities to have to go out three to five years to inspect your house, to make sure that you have the proper backflow preventers inside your house for your kitchen, sink, bathroom, sink, anywhere where you have water that could be harmful to yourself.
Every three to five years, you said?
If it's passed. Right now, it's, it's on the floor for discussion.
For those people that don't know, a backflow preventer.
It's a, it's a device that's on your system that catches debris before it gets to your actual drinking water. So therefore, when your water comes out the faucet, it's clean and free.
So this is already in our system right now?
It should be already, yes, it should be.
And you come out and inspect it every three to five years to see if it's still operable?
Yes, and the problem that we're fighting is because, as the mayor tell you, as the state and federal government mandates all this stuff to us, they give us no money. So that we have no way of paying for this, because this would become a tax to you guys, because the city can't pay for it, so you would wind up paying a fee for that. And that's why we're fighting. On the DPS direct level, we're fighting it because we don't want to pass on the cost to our citizens. You know?
Hey, what can the citizens do now to help you fight it?
Well, you can write to your legislator, your congressman, or senator, and let them know.
Better do it.
Because, I know, that's always our issue, when the state or the government mandates anything, who's going to pay for it? That's our biggest issue.
Any other question? We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Have you hearing?
Abort. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, go ahead.
A public hearing to amend the medical marijuana business license to include a additional, additional licenses in three categories, transportation of medical marijuana, distribution of medical marijuana, and testing of medical marijuana.
Chair McMoos, to open up the public hearing. Part B?
Been properly moved and supported, all those, on discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Public hearing is open. Anyone have any comments or questions as to what this is? The Michigan legislature passed a law in December of 2016, which included five licenses, provisionary centers, cultivation centers, testing, distribution, and transportation. We already have an ordinance to deal with provisionary centers and cultivation centers. The other three licenses are new, so we need to add those into our ordinance books so we can regulate it. Does anybody have any questions or comments as to this item? Boy, y'all so quiet. I'm gonna keep feeding y'all that heavy meat. This is going so smooth. I like this. Okay. Come on up, Ms. Stroh.
Mine concerns the testing. Already got them testing around the corner from you. Are they going to be? How are they going to be testing?
Primarily, they're testing for bacteria and they're testing for...
Not the use of...
Oh, no, 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 they're not, no, this is not a urine test. This is to test the actual plant, to make sure there's no bacteria in it. And they also test so they'll know the THC levels. So you'll know how strong a product is when you walk into dispensary to buy it. It's for our safety primarily. You want to test something else, huh? Okay. Anybody else?
Just a side conversation back here. How much revenue will we generate off of that? And has there been any thought of setting some of that aside for youth programs here in the city?
You know, we haven't even talked about what we're going to set aside for, but the tax, they tax will be 3%. And then we get a quarter of that, I think either 33% or a quarter, of that 3% comes directly to the city. So that's revenue we've never had before. And that's off the gross of everything, the dispensaries, the cultivation, transportation, just, all of it. So, when it ultimately pays the sales tax at the retail level, we get a portion of that that comes directly back to the city. In addition to that, we do, there's a lot of these new organizations, they're building new buildings. So we also get to assess those buildings and we receive property taxes. So this is one of the few businesses that we get double money from. Come on, Ms. Miller.
Good evening to everybody.
Good evening.
When they say distribution, what is it that they mean by that? I don't understand what, what distribution is going to mean. And when it comes time to give out the permits to do this type of work, is it just going to be with the folks who already have dispensary license and road license? Or are the outside companies going to be able to bid on this type of stuff?
Okay, um, two questions, okay. Distribution is, the state has created a middleman in order for the product to go from cultivation to the dispensaries, for the retail product, and from the processing places that make edibles or whatever they make, wax, to go to the dispensaries. They put in a middle person so they can regulate what's going from one spot to the other. So, it's kind of like any other distribution, distribution of cigarettes, distribution of any product. You have to, the cultivation place will have to call the distributor. The distributor will take their product, pay them for the product, and then put it to the transportation means, and it goes to wherever it has to go. So that, that's what they mean by, we'll find out real soon, because obviously it's new. So it won't happen probably till next year, but that's what they, the plan is.
So from what you're saying, more than likely, transportation distribution is going to be its own, if, you know, somebody was trying to set business to probably consolidate into services?
Well, it's only going to be so many distributors. I think they're going to limit that to each region will have a distributor. But then it's supposed to be a separate transportation company, meaning you can't own, you can't own a distributorship and a transportation company.
Okay, that's...
But you know how that goes. So, in, in your name. So you, the, the transportation company will come to distributor, pick up the product, and take it where it has to go.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Oh, come on.
Now, I may be wrong, but...
Uh-oh.
Um, so you said that the state, we get the sale tax, we get a percent of the sale tax?
A percentage.
Because I know federally, the distance, the, the, the companies, they cannot, like, bank their money, they cannot, like, donate money to somebody on a federal level, but they are able to do it through the state, right?
Sort of, because banks are federally insured.
Right.
And it's still illegal on the federal level.
Right.
Then you purportedly can't put your money into a federally insured bank. So what the state is trying to do is set up a state charter bank to do these financial transactions through. So you're going to have to put your money in the bank at some point, because the state has to get paid.
Oh, because when I found out that, I was just going to go around and start collecting them.
You can still do that. You can see Mr. Happen, he's right there. He's going to roll through. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Abort. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Consent agenda?
We'll pass that.
Okay, we're good. Boards and commissions, I know we have something there. Okay, Octavia Smith was nominated to the cable commission last meeting. Do we have a, an opening?
Yes, we have one.
And we received her resume, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, so you're ready, we got a motion?
Big motion to appoint Octavia Smith to the cable commission?
Abort. Okay, so probably moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, we also had a nomination last meeting for Winston Wade to the DDA. This would be a reappointment, I believe. Okay, so he's in good standing, Ms. Fields?
He supplied his resume to the council members, or good standing meaning he attends every meeting on a religious faithful basis.
That's what I want to know. Or at least most of the meetings, you know?
Mr. Wade does attend a fair amount of meetings, but he also misses meetings as well. I know that he is an entrepreneur, he does have his own electrical company, so his work may sometimes prevent his attendance, but I cannot speak beyond that.
Because I've been to a couple of meetings, I haven't seen them.
We should be too. I'm sorry, Ms. Fields. Well, maybe we should look into that before we do anything, because that was one of the stipulations, that new rule, that if you miss so many meetings, then, so if you're going to honor it, we got to honor it for everybody.
Yeah, we can do that, we can check into it. We had got that information all in the beginning of the year for every, all commission and boards reports for their attendance.
More than the three that I think.
Okay, well, we can handle it one or two, we can have two different ways. One, we can table it, or B, if no one makes a motion, no one makes a motion, so...
Maybe we should table it.
Okay.
I, I make a motion to table it.
Abort. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I do have a question.
Okay.
We just taped, but, yeah.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Yes, next meeting, and by then, we should have one.
Some information about his attendance records.
Ms. Fields, keep that out.
Can we get the ones updated from January to now? Okay, thank you.
There are a... Question, Chair. Because the rule normally would say if you missed three consecutive meetings, now that would excuse or without excuse?
I think it's, does it matter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some time ago, our boards and commissions agreed that we would not keep track of excused or unexcused absences, so it currently is just identified as an absence.
Okay, well, I guess it needs to be identified, because if someone called in and says, and they say you won't be excused, that's an excuse absent. So it's just three consecutive, but... So it says three consecutive, but it has to be, um, noted that whether it's unexcused or excused.
Well, I guess do we wanna be an excused business? Meaning, if you're not there, business is not getting done. So whatever the reason, we're not in kindergarten no more.
We get some more people. They could go without it.
And who gets to say, yes, that's excused or it's not?
But if he's in trouble and doesn't call, then, call, no call, no show.
But if they call and say, I'm not gonna make it, I'll see you next meeting, is that excused?
I see what you're saying, because like, for instance, I was in Georgia and I got back on Monday so I could be here for the planning commission meeting to make sure we had a quorum.
Right.
And that was because, you know, I knew if nobody else showed up and we didn't have a quorum, we had applicants who would just sit here until the next planning commission meeting, so we're holding up the process by not showing up.
I mean, it's up to y'all, I mean, it, it matters. I mean, I just don't know who's gonna be keeping up with all that.
I just think we just...
Ms. Fields, you in charge of excuses?
We do keep up with it if they are provided.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that the rules are clear and we're not violating the rule.
Well, I, I, what I'd like to know is, uh, you know, are, are we gonna approach him and let him know what the concern is, um, say aye and nay in terms of whether he wanna continue to try to be wanted to the board?
We can. Who's, whose district is in? You wanna call?
I think it's mine.
Yeah, I think he is, yeah, he's your district.
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna reach out to him?
I contacted him.
Okay. And then meanwhile, we'll get that information, so next meeting we'll be ready to do, we'll know what he wants to do, and we'll be ready to go.
Okay.
Okay? Alright, so we tabled it, so that passed. Got anybody else? Do we have any nominations for any boards and commissions tonight? Nothing? Okay. We're going on to, uh, ordinance.
A first reading to amend the existing ordinance to adopt by reference the water supply cross connection rules of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality being R. 325.11401 to R. 325.11407 of the Michigan Administrative Code.
Okay, that's the first reading. No action, we're taking on that. Okay, we have another first reading?
A first reading to amend the medical marijuana business license to include additional licenses in three categories: transportation of medical marijuana, distribution of medical marijuana, and testing of medical marijuana.
Again, that's the first reading, so there's no action to be taken on that. Okay, we have no second readings, on the new business.
Consideration and approval of a street closure request of Florence Street between Sylvia and Princess on July 22nd, 2017 for a block party from 12 noon until 10 p.m. This is for Donna and Vincent Lawrence.
I move.
Board? Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Hold up a second. We're gonna divert. Um, State Representative Joel Jones has to leave and he wants to address us with an update. Come on up.
Good evening to mayor, council, citizens, and, uh, welcome, Ms. Jordan and Ms. Bernard. Glad to have you all with the city. Um, I just wanted to get up and say that we are having a, uh, two volunteer meetings this weekend, I mean, this Friday, I'm at the Ince Recreational Complex, um, one at 12:30 to 2:30 p.m., and another from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Um, and also for any youth groups or, um, senior groups or anybody really, um, last week, we hosted the European Union's Ambassador, Caroline Vicini, and they said that they have a program where, um, individuals can go to Brussels and other, um, places in the European Union and learn about the government, um, just to travel. So if there's any, like, youth that are interested, uh, with any community groups, um, please just get in touch with myself or someone in the office. And also for any other youth groups, the Detroit Wayne County Port Authority, um, have some summer tours that they're doing for youth, taking them on up and down the Detroit and Rouge Rivers, um, and doing like little science projects and experiments. And so if anyone is interested in that, feel free to, um, get in touch with us. And that's it. Yeah, yeah.
Volunteer meeting?
These volunteer meetings on Friday are really just giving some updates about some events that we have going on over the summer, um, and then just seeing how we can partner up with people in the community for any other things, since we're, we're on recess, we got some, some extra time on our hands, so...
How young you have to be to go to Denmark?
Uh, you don't have to be young at all. If you wanna go, you just gotta let us know.
Oh, okay.
And it's, it's a, it's a fully sponsored trip as well, so, um...
I look like, we're going.
Especially for any of the, the, the council or anyone in administration, it might be a good id, uh, good opportunity to get a chance to go out and, and learn about some, uh, other systems of government across, um, the city, so...
Across the pond. Alright, thank you. Item B on the new business.
Consideration and approval of a street closure request of Meadowdale Street between Catch and Pen on July 29th, 2017 for a family reunion from 4 p.m. until 10 p.m., and this is for Mary Carter Murray.
I move. Board, been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase 26301 Carolow, which is located on the south side of Carolow at the corner of Carolow and Bayhand, and 1463 Magnolia, which is located on the east side of Magnolia at the corner of Magnolia and Center Drive, in the total amount of $4,000 to Platinum Real Estate Holdings LLC Anthony Ria.
I move.
Board?
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consider approval of a special conditions use to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at 2640 Princess in the M1 Light Industrial District. Per the recommendation of the planning commission, the applicant is Hellyard Hampton III.
I move. Board, been properly moved and supported, discussion? The applicant is here, if you have any questions for the applicant.
I have a question. How many will this make in the city?
This would be our fourth approval. Any other questions?
Cultivation license?
No, no, they, we don't have a limit on cultivation licenses. We... No, there's no limit. There's no cap. The only cap is for provisionary licenses, and that's three. Remember, this body took the cap off of cultivation licenses. It was originally two. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes.
Consider approving the requests for fireworks other than consumer or low-impact and carnival rides and closing of South River Park on Thursday at 3 p.m. For a special event request, Ince Summer Fest to be held July 8th and 9th, 2017, the applicant is the Ince Summer Fest Committee.
Board? Been properly moved and supported, discussion? There is, uh, they're gonna show us proof of insurance for the carnival, I think a $5 million liability policy, and the city's gonna be named as an additional insurer. We already have proof of insurance for the Summer Fest and the fireworks.
Fireworks is two.
Yep, fireworks is two.
Five and the Summer Fest is two. But we need one for, for the carnival.
Okay. Alright. Any other? Sure.
Which, you show my, my...
It's South River Street.
Street.
Between, um, it'll be from, where are you going from? The closing? Is it from Michigan Avenue to West? From Michigan Ave, I mean, from Ince Road to West, and, uh...
West. Right before you get to the, right before you get to the bank?
To West.
Yeah.
West Street, okay. So it would be from Ince Road to West Street.
Okay. Do you think, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consideration and approval of a contract for fiscal year 2017 audit.
Good move, Mr. Chair.
Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, public participation. Mabel Strowman.
Most I've ever gotten up at this meeting in my life. I would like to announce the Fifth Annual Lifelighters Educational Boot Camp, which is an educational enrichment program at St. James United Methodist Church in collaboration with Ince Public Housing Resident Council in Lemoine Gardens, and, uh, yeah, Lemoine Gardens. And this will start July 5th and run through July 27th. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 9 a.m., well, actually, 8:30, serve breakfast at 8:30, free breakfast, till 12, and we have free lunch. So we're asking that all children ages, no, not ages, pre-K through fifth grade, join us, and do, we'll do our best to keep them focused and on point.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Luana Abney Mitchell.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Um, today I'm asking for, um, permission. Um, first, excuse me, I'm kinda late with the application. I see it's supposed to be in 30 days before the event, but because we was trying to, um, get the right date and everything, we kinda late. But as I was filling out the application, I noticed that there was a $75 application fee. So I was coming on behalf of the Ince Bengals, asking can we get the application fee waived or reduced? Um, our annual family fund day this year, we'll be partnering with District Four, um, Councilman Chizum and our families in District Four will also be partnering with us, and we wanna have a mom-to-mom sale where our families can come out and sell things that they need, you know? So we asking that we get, can we get the application, um, fee waived?
Where's it gonna be held at?
Uh, we asking can we use, um, Ince Park?
Ince Park is a county park, so if you decide to do it there, you don't have to come before us on a special event policy, because we don't own it.
Oh, so do we have to go to the county?
Yeah, I mean, you go to the county just to rent the pavilion, you can, obviously the park is open to the public, so you can have it there, but if you want the pavilion, you have to reserve that with Wayne County.
Oh, okay.
But saves you $75.
It did.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, we changing the date from, um, July the 22nd to, um, July the 23rd.
Okay.
I'm glad you didn't take my money down today. Thank you guys.
What's the time for the...
What's the time?
What's the time for the picnic? It would be 12 to 5?
5, yeah.
Yeah, 12 to 5.
When you get the flyer, could you let us know so we can run it on community access cable channel?
Oh, I sure will.
Okay.
Would you guys like to partner with us and do anything?
You have enough partners.
I remember standing here on February the 3rd, asking the city of Ince to partner with the Ince Bengals, and the only thing I was asking for at that time, if we could use the complex for a fundraiser.
True.
And, but I have not been able to do it, and it's already July.
What's wrong?
No money. Remember, I wanted to know if we could use it to, um, free or reduce price, and Councilman right there been working with me on there, but we haven't been able to do it.
All you have to do is get that councilman to put his name on the, on the bill. That's all you have to do.
So you, you told, you directed him to me, but you didn't tell him what he needed to do, and I'm like, I don't know what you need to do, just have to... So now we know.
Let's back up. If you recall, not long ago, I told you what we need to do, was sit down and meet with the director.
And we couldn't meet with Craig, 'cause he was never available.
Correct. That's a whole different issue.
Yeah.
But you gotta catch him tonight.
Okay, thank you guys, that's why I love you guys. Thank you, Councilman.
Toe? Toe? Toe, Paving?
Top.
Top? Top?
Top, Paul.
Okay, T.A.V.
T.O.V.
T.O.V., top, okay.
Yep. How y'all doing?
Good, how are you?
I used to live here, like, 30 years ago, grew up here, moved away, now I came back.
Okay.
Thank you. And I just have some, several concerns, I just wanna address the council.
Okay.
And I wanna say thank you, Connie, because me and my wife called you several times about one of our neighbors, and you helped out with that situation. Well, getting back to the point here, we wanna know what's gonna be done with Westwood Park, if that's gonna be cleaned up and, you know, made, you know, so the kids can actually play there. I know the Bengals play down there, but it's still a mess. Um, we have issues with people speeding down our street, which is stolen. We see them all the time, and it's a short block between Shadow Lawn and John Daly, and they speed, and we were wondering, maybe if you could, we can get speed bumps, maybe that'll slow them down, because just, you know, yelling at them doesn't work. And we've addressed this with the, uh, we addressed this with an officer, we stopped him, but then he also said that there's only two officers patrolling, and that was lead to my other concern, is that all we have in the city of Ince is two officers patrolling our entire city? And, um, um, other things, there's trash in front of neighbors' houses, you know, debris and stuff, what, what about the city ordinances when it comes to, uh, levying fines or whatever you guys do when you see people's grass not cut? We just, uh, we want the city to look nice and not, you know, disgusting and, you know, all that. Um, then the other thing is trees on the berms. I know that's the city's property, and when do they come and trim those? Because some of them are drooping down where trucks are hitting them and knocking the branches down and things like that. And the last thing, 'cause I'm trying to run through this, I know I got three minutes, is, um, there's rumors that our area is supposedly gonna be redistrict to Dearborn Heights, and I just wonder, is there any truth in that?
No. No. Can you, uh, address the tree trimming policy?
Um, to mayor and council, to the viewer audience, and to the audience here, and to the department here, we are in the process now of formulating a list for our contractor to go out and trim trees citywide. So if you give me your address after the meeting, I'll put your street on our list.
Okay. I got it, I got it right here.
Alright.
As to Westwood Parks, I'd like to, since you're here, um, the Bengals practice there, they're gonna, A, keep it clean, also, we have some summer programs with teenagers this summer, and they're adopting parks, and they're gonna go a couple days a week and also keep the parks clean, paint the equipment that's there, and, and update our parks. Um, as long, we have 11 employees through our summer program through the rec center are gonna do the same thing. So we expect to see some improvements in all of the parks, all the city parks this So, we expect to see some improvements in all of the parks, all the city parks this summer. Because we're gonna have people actually working on it and, uh, making some improvements to it.
Okay.
And with respect to trash, just let us know, call, call and give us the address. We'll send code enforcement out, they'll issue a citation. So, whenever you see something is out of order, just call City Hall or go to the website, send us a message, and we'll get right on.
Okay, like I told you, I got addresses.
Okay, well, you give it to us tonight.
I'd like to add to what the mayor just said, in case you don't know it. I, I don't know what district you're in.
4.
District 4, well, each, in each district, there's an advisory committee for that whole district to address and deal with some of the things that you mentioned, so forth. In fact, I think they're in the process of doing that now. Not totally sure for that district, but there's five or six districts where we all working together to deal with, address all the things that you're talking about in each one of our districts. So, you might want to make contact with.
I was gonna cover that during my communication. Oh, okay.
All right.
Thank you. All right, one more thing. Um, because we were discussing too with my neighbors, I mean, I, I don't know how we do that. We like to form a block club.
Sure.
How, is that something we have to, oh, you again? I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kellen Smith.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Council, our viewers, audience. You all know I wear several hats in the community. So, I'm standing before you now as a Starfish employee, as well as a community member. Uh, there's just a couple of things that I want to, uh, share. And, uh, I'm gonna probably need more than three minutes, but maybe 4.5 minutes. First of all, I'd like to say that Starfish Family Services, uh, Starfish University has started our summer sessions. And, um, I want to, uh, acknowledge that we do have some interesting, uh, things happening, such as cardio drumming, which starts on Wednesday, July 12th, runs through August the 2nd, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m., excuse me. Um, cooking on a budget starts July 11th through August the 1st, on Tuesdays, from 5:00 to 7:00. And we also have a walking club that takes places, take place in the morning over at Garden City Park. There's no registration required for that, that starts at 10:00 a.m. if you wanna get a good workout in. And then we have some basic computer skills as well. Um, if you're interested in any of the programs, it's free. I do have some catalogs here with me, you're more than welcome to have one. Again, the, all the programs in the university are free. You can also go to starfishuniversity.net if you want to register for any of the classes. I also want to share with you that, um, the city of Inks, um, in collaboration with SOAR, as well as Starfish Family Services, will be hosting a financial fitness pro, uh, event that's gonna take place July the 22nd at Cherry Hill School of Performing Arts. And this is to support residents in the community, uh, who may be having some issues with their credit scores or looking to purchase some homes, foreclosures. We also have some senior and veteran grants that are gonna be provided as well. So, if you know of any seniors that, you know, need some opportunities as it relates to their homeownership, please let them know about the event. There are some flyers along the wall as well. Um, I also want to make mention, because no one has done that as of yet, I believe that all of us in the room are aware of the Inks to Summer Fest that's gonna take place next Saturday and Sunday. But as one of the committee members, along with Councilman Williams and, uh, the support of our city and council, I'd like to mention that the Summer Fest will be taking place at the intersection of Inks to Road and Michigan Avenue on Saturday and Sunday. Please go to the Inks to Summer Fest Music Fest, uh, Facebook page, you can get all the details there. It's a complete lineup, we're looking to have a great time on both of those days. Um, also, as a community member, um, I have been living, um, on, in the city of Inks for several years. And the block that I live on, a couple of my neighbors, well, not so much me, but, uh, because I don't do soil, but I watch them, uh, work out in the yard. There's a field right there, Division in Hazelwood, that they've been taking really good care of. And they're interested in knowing how they can go about obtaining that lot right there. And, um, I did mention that it probably will be a good idea for them to come down to the city and let them know, because we're very interested in, you know, helping support with bringing the city back to the way that we want it to be. And, uh, they've taken that initiative and gotten out there and cleaned up the yard. They've been mowing the lot, um, edging it up, and there's some things that they wanna do, like kind of, uh, pocket parks, if you will, some benches and, and a community garden they're talking about doing over there. So, if you could just tell me who they probably need to speak to to try to get that taken care of.
Ms. Fields.
Ms. Fields, I'm making a real moment, she may get in contact with you. I think that's all that I have, thank you so much.
Thank you. Father Clifton.
Good evening again. On behalf of Chief William Riley, uh, Dr. Gary Williams from Boy Scouts and St. Clement's Episcopal Church, we'd like to thank everyone who supported our Breakfast with the Chief fundraising activity this past Thursday. Uh, the proceeds for that, plus, uh, extra proceeds that I'm hoping that we will be able to get from the community, and especially from businesses here, will go to fun. Bugging Out 2017, everybody. Bugging Out 2017. It is our second annual Cub Scout Camp, which is gonna be held at St. Clement's. Uh, I told, um, August 14th through 18th, from 9:00 until 3:00. We serve breakfast and lunch every day. I won't go on and on about this, but, uh, there are flyers over there, uh, in the window. We will hope that, um, uh, young people, um, will attend this residential day camp. This is for, um, ages 6 through 11, or 7 through 11, I believe. Um, I do have pledge cards for this activity. And what I'm gonna do is pass some over to the good chief.
You're welcome.
And I will be holding on to some of them, and if anybody would like to, uh, contribute to this worthwhile event, $50 sponsors one kid for the whole week. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
What time does it start?
Uh, 9:00 to 3:00 on, uh, August the 14th to 18th.
Activia Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Uh, the Chiefs. Um, I'm really excited about this weekend, I'm looking forward to this Jazz Fest. But I wanted to come today to, um, give you guys the information about things to Chamber of Commerce, uh, because the next following weekend, on July the 15th, we'll be having a Laugh to What Hurts Comedy held at the Stardust Lounge. Um, the tickets are $20 each, and we are looking for you to come out and support the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I don't know if Ms. Ruthie is here. I think she left. So, I was trying to put the flyer to just show the names. But I believe I sent the information out to you guys, but I will resend it out again, um, just so you can support. Come on and have a good time, laugh a little, I mean, we laugh at council, but laugh at a little bit more stuff. Um, and always like to just encourage you to stop by Western Wayne Family Health Center for all your medical needs and your dental needs, um, for all of those programs, um, like eating healthy, being active, dining with diabetes, diabetes support group, um, yoga, zumba, all those things that are free of charge. So, we are, our doors are always open, 2700 Hamlin, Inks to Michigan. Um, and thank you all for your time.
What time is it?
What time and date?
For the.
Comedy.
Comedy. It's Saturday, July the 15th. Um, I believe the doors open at 7:00, and the comedy is actually gonna start at 8:00 o'clock, cuz we don't wanna be in there, you know, late, late, late. So, um, 7:00 start at 8:00, okay?
Thank you.
At Stardust, at the Stardust.
Oh, Stardust.
Yeah, at the Stardust Lounge, our Stardust Lounge in Inks. Any other questions? Oh, Father Clifton also has some tickets to sell, but I, of course, I have tickets to sell. Any other questions? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Gabe Henderson.
Hello, family, how's everybody doing today?
Good.
How are you?
I just wanna come here, you know, wanna thank all the people that came out, Inks the good fellas, you know, we had a fish fry, spaghetti and all that, coleslaw, cake and all, cake and all that good stuff. I wanna thank you, and we're gonna be having a pancake, uh, we might have another event coming up before a pancake breakfast, you know, usually in October, but we still trying to raise money, you know, for our children for, for Christmas time. And, uh, I know a gentleman, he was talking about, you know, a particular park, you know, sort of, uh, not kept up, you know, you know. There's always been, to talk through, you know, a beautification committee that was trying to get people to, you know, to, uh, organize and, uh, you know, wanna try, like I said, Doppa Park and all that, come together, you know, keep. And, um, and volunteerism is something that need to be, uh, catching, you know, because we need it. Uh, we went to Inks, it ain't never had a whole lot of money, you know, but we always did well what we, uh, what we had. Now, but we've always had some good spirit, you know, and sometimes we, we have to just wake people up to, you know, and, and reactivate that, you know, volunteerism, you know, in the city of Inks. I love Inks to myself, you know, a, a three score and 10. I was born over there on Crystal Court, you know, house was gone and all that, you know, and I just think about many other people. George Williams, he born over there on Bridgeport Court. They tried to get him to the hospital, I think he came out in the cab, you know what I'm saying? So, he doesn't, okay, we love Inks to, you know, we got a lot of good folks, you know, George don't mind. I don't think he mind, everybody, you know, he's still in there trying to help. And I love you all, and, you know, Father Clifton, you know, many, you know, he got his place opened up all the time, you know, for anything that's needed to help our community, the spirit of that man, you know, I really appreciate. I, I was telling him, I might, you know, I almost think about starting going back to church, you know? Yeah, but I, you know, I wanna thank everybody, you know, for allowing me to be a part of the city and help out. You know, I still trying to figure out, y'all must, that was gonna discuss something very important you didn't want me to find out, 'cause you had me out there cooking hamburgers. What is y'all talking, what is y'all talking? Anyway, now, I love you, you know.
We're talking about well-done hamburgers.
Oh, okay, I try to do my best, you know, and let God do the rest, but, you know. But I wanna say everybody have a beautiful holiday and all that, and I think Inks we are on the right road. We need a little more help and all that, and we're gonna be all right.
All right.
Yeah, we're gonna be all right. And I think.
Of course, we thank Mr. Henderson for being our chef tonight.
Thank you.
You can always count on him. All right, uh, Mr. Chizum.
Oh, that was quick.
Mm-hmm.
All righty, um, my first thing is citizens have held my feet to the fire. I did purchase my bicycle, I haven't ridden a bike in 13 years. So, cycling with Councilman Chizum is on its way. As a matter of fact, I rode into St. Clement's Church and back, and that was six miles. And let me tell you something, Inks ain't as small as you think it is. That was something, I'm, I, wow, you get used to driving a car, and, uh, that 10 minutes turned into 26 minutes. So, yeah, uh, the ordinance, in regards to that, ordinance was actually, as a matter of fact, I got to ride with the ordinance officer and see what the process is and everything. And there's a, it's not just overnight process, when they go out, they have to send out notice and everything like that. I mean, Gina had my handwriting like I was a, um, a scribe. And address after address after address after address, going up and down, up and down, up and down, every block, so. So, it does take time. She was, as a matter of fact, uh, she was in our neighborhood, as well as Terrence Worth and other ordinance officer. But some of the items that you might have, uh, have issues about, they might already be in the works, but it still doesn't hurt to just turn them in to you, cuz they could just update you on the status of that. Um, I saw Luana's on the job, she's the vice president of my district advisory committee. So, I saw she came over and talked to you guys, so that's good, because we had went out in the past, and I'm not sure. I know you said you just came back, so I don't know if you had got the notice or not. Some of them may have blown away, cuz we couldn't put the notice in your mailbox. So, that kinda tough year when we put it on about 2,000 doors for our first advisory meeting, had all my contact information on it, but I'll make sure I get you that information formally. Um, we are working on, Councilwoman Wotley had submitted to us flyers and whatnot for collaborations with ICAN, with sponsoring cleanups and everything like that. And I was working on one as well, just for our district, but we're gonna be still collaborating with them. But ours is just in revision, I just sent some stuff out to my advisory committee about that. Flyer for cycling, um, Councilman Chizum. Oh, and our next upcoming meeting, which I'm aiming at the end of July, but I just haven't finalized that yet. Then the last two things I have is, there was a letter that went out to the city for businesses. And some of the churches and I guess apartment buildings got them too for certificates of compliance. Ms. Fields, would you be able to just clarify that a little bit? Because I know churches are nonprofits, so I was just trying to find out what was going on with that.
Yes, sir, I'll be more than happy to do that. Uh, the, um, we received, the building department, we received a list of commercial properties in the city based on water accounts. So, in our first go-around through that list, there were 677, um, commercial accounts identified. So, we had a, kinda had to go through and eliminate based on repeat addresses and that kinda thing. And so, we ended up with about, um, 470-something addresses, so there was a reduction of 200. So, when manually going through each, uh, each name and address on that list, um, some of the churches may have gotten by because, um, they weren't readily identifiable, um, that it was actually a church. So, there may be, um, like, a couple of apartment complexes, as you mentioned. There may be a couple of churches who should not have gotten that letter, cuz it was truly intended for commercial properties. And in that letter, it, um, states that it's speaking to commercial properties. So, if any entity, be it a church or an apartment complex, received that in error, they can certainly contact, um, the number on the letter, which is the number for the building department, but also the city clerk's office number is on there too. But the building department would be able to let them know if that, um, new annual inspection that is required of all commercial businesses is also required of the entity who is questioning, does this mean me?
Gotcha, thank you very much.
And so, just very quickly, um, since I have the microphone and everything, the city is initiating an annual inspection for commercial businesses in the city as part of the business licensing process. So, um, when we, uh, in, I believe, November of every year, and it spells it out very well in the letter, I think, um, there's a letter sent out by the clerk's office reminding all businesses that they need to renew their business license. Every commercial in the, um, business in the city should have their business license. And I'm just gonna repeat it again for emphasis, every commercial business in the city should have their business license. So, um, in addition to getting fire inspections, now we're asking that all businesses also have an annual inspection. And so, really, it's just ensuring that our businesses are in compliance with our, um, building codes um, for life, health, and safety issues and that kinda thing. So, it's probably very important that businesses do not wait till November of each year in order to have that annual inspection, cuz there might be a couple of things that you need to repair prior to getting the business license. So, you will need that certificate of compliance from the building department before you can go to the, um, clerk's office to get that business license issued.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
My last thing is, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record at this part, but the alleyway behind John's Good Times, my citizens have been calling every time they address a concern off of Arcola or Tromley, they're speaking of that alleyway. And I've been trying to keep them calm, as well as ordinance, and they have either called me, Gina Triplet, or they called, I think they have called the clerk's office, cuz they wanna file a formal complaint with the mayor. So, I just wanna address and let everyone know that I have been, um, on the issue for a while, but with manpower and everything that the way that it is, and the way the city's trying to turn around, all our resources are just everywhere else. So, though it's in the works with DPS and everything like that, so wanna let everyone know, um, do it as fast as they can. Thank you.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes, thank you, I'm the chair. I'd like to, um, today, when I went out today, um, I noticed a lot of, lot of debris. People moving out their houses or getting set out. I know code enforcement is working diligent, but what can we do? Because, I mean, is it something, maybe we need to put that particular ordinance in the calendars? Cuz the calendars reaches most of the residents, but it's getting ridiculous. I mean, every day that I'm coming out and looking in my district, they dumping. And, and, and if it's a rental property, the owner shouldn't know by now what our ordinance are, that you need to have a dumpster. So, maybe we, I don't know what we need to do, but that's, it's getting ridiculous. Our next, um, I talked to Nate before he left, and I never got an answer. He just said it was work on it. It's a house on 27306 Lehigh, right off of Inks to Road. And it's behind, um, area where Dollar General is supposed to be.
Mm-hmm.
But that house, I'm, guys go down there, you can't even see the house because of the weeds and. It should've been torn down, I'm not sure what's going on, but it's right off the, it's on the same side as the Dollar General, right behind it. Uh, I need an update on that, if possible, Ms. Jordan, if, or Jeanie, if you can give me an update on what's going on at that. And that's it, that's all I have, and just have a safe holiday and see you back in two weeks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Luana.
Nothing.
Look, you gotta stop doing that.
I'm, I'm perfect, everything's perfect.
Councilman Oden.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening to everyone. I'd like to, um, thank all of the citizens who came out to the District 2 meeting that we had last month, which was a very productive meeting. I also like to thank the staff who came in and set things up with us, for us, I mean, uh, Brent, I mean, uh, yeah, Brent and Troy came in and set things up for us, speakers, so forth and so on, and to deal with the slides. Very, uh, painful day for us. I also like to thank the chief, uh, who came out and answered a lot of questions of the citizens. He had a pretty decent turnout, uh, along with the code enforcement, code enforcement officer. Real good job in answering questions and providing information. As I ride through the, through the city, I, I, I've been noticing in different locations, we have these big tractor trailers parked within the communities, on side streets, so forth. And I know that they're not supposed to be there, but I also know that we got our hands full otherwise. I think there's something we might wanna take a look at, because it's happening more often than not. There was a couple of locations over, in fact, recently, just Sunday, in fact, I, uh, I spotted one, uh, at Wellington and. Kitsch.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, I know who you're talking about, he parks there all the time.
Yeah, there, and they also park right there on the corner of, uh, Inks to Road, and I think that's Wellington, not Wellington. But anyway.
I know who you're talking about. I know who you're talking about.
We, we, we got, we got a problem with it, and I think we need to address it, because it seems like they're doing it, and they sort of just taking advantage of the community, and they know they shouldn't be in the community with those big trucks. Uh, also, I got a chance to talk today with, um, Lou Pisker of Wayne Metro, and, um, a while back, we were discussing him getting involved with providing services for the people in public housing. He's going to be, uh, contacting us, and he's going to be getting with the, let him know that we had a new housing director, he's going to be making contact with you. Smith knows what I'm talking about, her and I have talked about it, so looking forward to that, because that's going to be with what she's looking at doing and trying to do, when I think it's going to have a big impact. That's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Uh, I just have a question, who's responsible for the flower beds at Michigan and, uh, Inkster Road? Because there are flowers in those beds. And it's just a grown-up mess, grown, meaning G R O W, the weeds are grown-up mess.
D D A. Which you are a member of.
Well, I just needed to ask a question. Thank you, that's enough.
You finished?
I'm done. Yeah, I just needed to know.
You need some help with the flowers?
No.
Mayor Protop.
Okay. Okay, good, good evening. Uh, District One, I'm hosting a meeting on Thursday, July the sixth, at St. Clement's Episcopal Church on Harrison, forty-three hundred Harrison. Topic of discussion is the City of Romulus Sinking Fund and Military Operation, uh, Fund. Um, on, in August, on August the eighth, they have an election in Romulus, and it, it basically concerns the citizens that live in District One and Precinct One. So if you're on the west side of Middleville, um, you need to be at this meeting, because this concerns you as well. Um, they're going to be talking about the taxes, the sinking fund, and, um, you should be there. We're going to have some people there from Romulus who attended, and we're going to have a discussion to see where we go from there. Um, I don't want to tell you, don't vote yes or no, but you need to come out and get the information. Uh, Ms. Smith has already talked about the Summer Fest, we're going to have a great time over the weekend, thank you, and continue to, um, shop Inkster, thank you.
Did someone announce this? Do we need to announce?
Yeah.
Okay, you did, okay. All right, I just want to thank everybody who came out last Sunday to seize the feed, seventeenth annual picnic, we had a great time, great turnout, the kids have, had a great time, so. It was a little heavy on our hearts, because we lost one of our members, uh, two days prior, uh, his name is Tony Bradley, got in a car accident on E Course and Merriman, and, and, um, we had to bury him just this past Friday, so. It was definitely a sad, it was a rough weekend to have to put on the event, uh, going through that at the same time, but we do appreciate everybody coming out, um, keep his family in prayer, and everybody have a safe and happy holiday tomorrow. No long weekend for us, because we're here, you know, working it out, but we will take tomorrow off and have a good time, we'll see everybody back in two weeks, and, uh, we'll see, we're looking forward to it, have a good night. Most of you are Germanists? Support. Public movement support, all those who pay for that.
Aye.
You did such a good job.